Okay, we'll call to order this committee of the home meetings for Tuesday, October 3rd at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Sato?
Here.
Etac?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanzick?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
No.
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Seron?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item 2 is approval of the minutes for August 1st, August 22nd, and September 12th, committee of the home meetings. Any comments or questions on those? If not, could I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by Chanzick, second by...
Meitzler.
Meitzler? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. That'll go to city council. Item 3, items removed, editor changed. Lord, do we aye?
None.
None?
Well, did it make it to the agenda, the thing that we're taking off the agenda?
Say that again.
Yes. Okay. So... We do need to take that off the agenda. Is it still on the agenda?
We're discussing it, you know, it's withdrawn.
Oh, no. We're not discussing it even though it's withdrawn. So, yeah, that would be proper to take it off the agenda.
No, it's...
It was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, so we'll just get by it as...
God has a word to say.
Yeah, it was on the agenda because there was actually a notice that went out to property owners adjacent, so we wanted to at least put it on there and then say that it was actually withdrawn.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go on then to item 4, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody from the public would like to address us for an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, if you're here and you want to address us for an item that is on the agenda, when the time is right, I'll ask you to come up to the podium and give us your name and address in order to address us and just try to get my attention. We'll probably, whatever the item is, we'll have discussion here between staff and the committee first, and then we'll let the audience discuss also. All right, next item is item number 5, which is the initial land use for a proposal for Fox Valley Sports and Entertainment Center. And Scott Buening, our director of community development, has put out a memo and just advised us also that it has been withdrawn for tonight's meeting, so there's no need to have that discussion. Item 6, ordinance 17-61, amending the official zoning map with the R1H Single Family Residential High Density District and planned development overlay for 1600 West Wilson Street. Kevin Stowe is the applicant, and Alderman Stark.
So, the attached ordinance 1761 and resolution 17110R would approve a six-unit subdivision of property at 1600 West Wilson, which is where the West Side Water Tower used to be. The draft ordinance would amend the zoning map to reclassify the property from per four multi-family residential medium density, which would be like townhouses, to R1H Single Family Residential High Density with a planned development overlay. The resolution would approve the preliminary plat for the proposal, and ordinance 1761 would grant deviations under the planned development to allow the proposed configuration of lots. Both actions include conditions of approval, and final plat approval would be required in conjunction with the closing of the property sale. In terms of a background, we advertised this site for sale in December of 2016 and had a land contract in 2017 contingent on zoning approval. And, excuse me, the plan commission, on this go-round of this, had a public hearing on September 6th. At the request of the applicant, it was continued to September 20th. Three members of the public spoke during the public hearing. Several felt that the proposed project is a better fit with the neighborhood than the previous development proposal considered and rejected. And speakers inquired about the proposed configuration and whether the applicant considered other mixes of uses or further reducing the number of units on the property. The applicant responded that he felt that a single-family use was the most appropriate use and that the proposed number of units was the most viable configuration. One resident requested that a traffic study be conducted to verify whether the local streets could handle additional traffic. Staff noted that the applicant is seeking a reduction in the number of units from what is permitted. Speakers inquired about street parking and their effect on guests. On-street parking is prohibited on the West Side of Spewler. Independence Drive is similarly signed along the West Side, and the plan provides all required parking for single-family residences. Overall, plan commission felt that the single-family residential is an appropriate use of this location. They noted that smaller homes will fill a need for starter homes in the community. Community. Commissioners agreed that the proposed modification of the zoning code were appropriate. The commission agreed to include a condition to specify the Wilson Street building elevations includes shutters and shingles, single siding, as an enhanced elevation along this entry corridor to the community. Commission also added a condition to require additional landscape of varying heights along this elevation subject to staff review. The plan commission recommended approval of a preliminary plat of subdivision and zoning map amendment for R1H with planned development, with conditions as specified in the draft ordinance by a vote of 6 to 0. There was one absent. And the plan commission approved design review by a vote of 6 to 0. And again, there was one absent. The pros for this approval would permit infill development of the water tower site with single-family residential units. Cons, not approving ordinance 1761 and resolution 17110R would reject the proposed development, leaving the property off the tax rolls of developed and unsold. Budget impact, the city would collect fees for building permits and utility connections. The water utility would receive payment for the sale of the property if the council agrees to sell the property for this project. And of course, we'll get tax money for this, too. And then staff impact, staff time has and would be used to complete the entitlement and permitting process. So, if this were to be passed, it would be going to city council for final action on October 16th. Staff does recommend, and obviously so does plan commission, recommends passage of this as presented. So, does anyone have any questions?
Well, that was CC.
I think it's brilliant. If I could just say one thing, that the plan commission did review the subdivision variation to request the payment of capital park and school fees to be paid at time of permit rather than at plating, because that does fall under subdivision ordinance, and so it does require their review. It would be only the city council's action to approve the request to defer the full payment of the fire capital and capital of public works fees to permit based on the request of the applicant, rather than at final plat.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Scott?
What's the average house, the home value to be, as far as, what's the guest limit at this point?
I don't believe the applicant mentioned that at the hearing, but I can let him come up to the microphone and answer it.
Great.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Stowe. Actually, that was a question of the plan commission, and the answer that I provided was that the plan is for these to be in the mid $200,000 range.
About how many square feet?
1,300 to 1,500 square feet, give or take.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a comment. I think, you know, one of the things that we're constantly talking about is affordable housing for young families, or teachers, or someone trying to establish themselves. And I think this is a really nice development in light of what was proposed there originally. Sounds like, you know, when we had a really, a strong opposition to the first thing, it sounds like people really approve this. And it just, it seems to me to be a great addition to the city.
Anyone else?
You know, I had one question that I forgot to ask right off the bat was, we've had issues before where we permit, you know, smaller lots like this, and say somebody buys one of these and they decide that they want to put a deck or patio or anything behind it. Is that permissible on that property with the small setbacks and everything else that's on the lot sizes? Would they be able to do anything in the backyard?
So, the planned development does have a specification limiting where a patio or deck could go. Basically, the zoning code does say, basically, once it's over three feet, then it has to follow the principal setbacks. If it's less than three feet, or it's like a grade patio, the ordinance would limit...
Because I just don't want to see us put in six houses here, and then in the next, you know, two years after these get built, have six people come in asking for variances to be able to put a patio behind their house.
So, if the minimum rear setback under this planned development would be for, basically, an allowance to go to eight feet rather than 10 feet.
Okay.
So, it gives it a little more...
A little bit of room.
But it is a tight site.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? Dave?
Drew, if this, if this were passed, and then for some reason the development didn't proceed, the building of these homes didn't proceed, is there a time limit on how long this amendment is good for, or is it standing as until somebody else comes in and wants to do something different?
So, there is a provision within the ordinance that if the sale were not to go through, that basically the planned development would revert, and there would have to be a new proposal, essentially.
That's the sale, but after, if it were to sell?
If it were to sell and things were not to be followed through, there is a time duration within the planned development ordinance, I believe, of, design review is two years, and I believe the planned development ordinance is also two years. If nothing was to happen, then I believe there's a mechanism that they request additional time. Otherwise, it would basically revert at that point.
Yeah, I thought there was something, but I wasn't sure. Thank you for clarifying that. And also, my only other comment, I mean, I'm supportive of this, but I'm glad to see that the plan commission addressed the facade a little bit and the landscaping. I think that is good.
Anyone else? Anybody have any questions of the developer, since he's here? Is someone waving over there without my glasses on? No?
Actually, I do have a comment.
Okay, Tony.
I'm very happy to see this project going forward. The experience that I have with it when I was doing building trades, the superintendent of the school district at the time, and Bill McGrath and I had some initial talks about doing some workforce housing there. Housing for young families, you know, police officers, teachers, people working in the community, which I think is a great need for that, and it's beneficial to have that, have them living in our community where they're working rather than a neighboring community. So, I'm very supportive of the project.
Thank you. Okay.
The public?
Sorry?
Anybody from the public?
Oh, is anyone here from the public who'd like to speak?
Nope.
Okay, now, so would someone like to make a motion to recommend ordinance, scrolling, scrolling, ordinance 17-61 amending the official zoning map for R1H Single Family Residential High Density District and planned development overlay to city council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Uer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Would someone like to make a motion to city council, resolution 17-110R, approving a preliminary plat of subdivisions for 1600 West Wilson Street? Kevin Stowe, applicant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by McFadden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
You got that.
All right, so because there's a 1 no vote for each one, they both have to go on the regular agenda, as they should anyway, probably. Okay, so this will go to the next city council meeting, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number 8, resolution 17-107-R, authorizing execution of a contract for Braburn Marsh, five-year management and maintenance agreement with V3 and the amount not to exceed Alderman Wolf, I think this is yours.
I do have this. As the mayor explained to us last night, this is something that we've talked about for a while. You would definitely like to see this go through as, as far as setting up a contract for a term to manage the marsh and maintain it. Do you have something you want to show us tonight?
No, I was just clearing all those exhibits.
And if we look through, excuse me, the different bids and everything, I think it was pretty competitive for what we're, what we ended up getting on this from V3 compared to some of them. And I think it's definitely something that we need to do, because I think just as much as the fire hazard the mayor is really concerned about, I think that there's a lot of other things that go along with that, especially in the neighborhoods over there, the flooding issues that they've had in the past, when this does get plugged up and it does happen on a regular basis, so it needs regular maintenance. Anybody have any questions? Dan?
From maybe five, six years ago, and there was a lot of residents, there were some meetings, getting people together, and trying to do an education campaign to get the residents to stop dumping yard waste and things in their backyards. Are people generally compliant, or are people doing their part still?
I believe most of that was more on, the Braburn Marsh is owned by two entities. The portion that's presented here is the west side of Randall Road, and that's what we're maintaining. I think a majority of that was on the east side in the Braburn subdivision there. I've walked that a few times this year. The Forest Preserve has a new manager out there. He's been very active, getting things cut and reseated and cleaned up a lot, so he's made it known. I've had email contacts. I don't know if there's as much education out there as there was before, but I've walked it and I don't see as much either. So, I think, we send notices out every six years, all of the creeks in town get a letter, and I believe that was in the last year or two that I sent notices to all those that backed up to this waterway, the McQuaid Road Tributary, reminding them that you should not dump adjacent to a waterway. This information's also available in my office, and I believe that one time it was down here in building department. So, it does get out there and circulated, and we try to publish it in neighbors as well.
I recognize that the two different sides have two different maintenance plans to them, but now that that weir is open up, it seems like the two sides, when one side is full, the other side is full, they're definitely, they seem to work together better now.
Yes. It's going to take maybe another year or so to get back up to where the east side meets a little bit more with the west side, because there was a lack of maintenance over there. But they do all work in unison. We're also, the one other item that we're looking at out in the Braburn Marsh is there's a lot of trees that are out there, and they're all those scrub trees that were dropped along the way as seeds, and they shouldn't be there. So, Scott Haynes and I will be walking that area along with Mahoney Creek, where there's some trees that shouldn't be there, and get a contract, a proposal out later this fall to have the work done in the winter when it's a little bit more solid ground. But that will help give the illusion that everything is burning, too, because I know when we go, have gone out there and burned, there's a lot of those trees and stubs that stand up, and it looks as if it didn't burn, but it's really not material that can easily burn. So, that's one other thing that we're going to be looking at, is preventative maintenance out there as well, because there are, if you notice, if you go out to Walmart, there's some big trees at the base of that wall, and we just want to prevent them from getting much larger without affecting that extremely tall wall.
And any other projects on the Forest Preserve side that could be brought along, or are we generally satisfied with the red right now?
I feel that he's come a long way, and he, you know, the moment he stepped in, it was last March, he had worked at the Forest Preserve before, didn't realize that all that stuff needed to be done. He had a crew of 50 people out there, clearing everything, restoring, removing the invasives that shouldn't have been there. So, I highly applaud his effort at that. He took it and ran with it, and he's trying to see what they can do, but most of the work is being done in-house by the Forest Preserve. At this time, I don't know if there may be one or two items that they may look at contracting out, but for the most part, they have enough people on staff that are capable and trained to do that work.
Marty?
Yeah, just had a quick question on the, the percentage that it was below the engineers'. It's pretty significant, 60, 65%. It's $240,000 under, is there any reason to be concerned? Because it's, it's a great savings, but...
It is. I look back at the previous five years, and I believe the range that was in the engineer's estimate was near $300,000. And CAP came in and totally outbid everybody, and we are at $72,000 for those five years. And at this point, I just had an invoice on my desk last week, I think we've only used $51,000 of the 72 for the five years. So, there's preventative measures and things in there that don't always need to be utilizing the whole fund. So, yeah, I think this was just the right time to put this out there. Everybody's looking for their next year's work, and that's part of the reason I put it out. I had talked to multiple of our contractors that do the psychological management, and they said this is a perfect time to get it out there, get a good price. And I just want to make note that I know the mayor is very concerned about getting it burned, so we did have a burn scheduled in there every year, although our contractors have advised that it's only necessary every other year. So, it is a special, like starred item in that every other year, that if the staff feels that it's not necessary because there's not enough growth there, that that item can be pulled. And I think V3's price was near $6,000 or so for that area to be burned, so they'll be watched and monitored.
And there was a couple others that were fairly close to that, too, so it wasn't that this was a complete outlier.
So, it was nice to see those. I mean, these are, and these were prices that one of our consultants had put together, but now getting these, we may have to revisit some of the bids, just like what we've gotten for some other things. Some of the contractors are hungry and they're lowering their prices, which is very beneficial for us.
Thank you. Elliot, you had a question?
Do we, do we have any idea of the Forest Preserve side, what their schedule for burning is to be?
No, unfortunately, I don't have it with me. I do email, his name is Ben, and I'm not sure if he was doing that yet this fall, but I think he was at least looking at doing some mowing and/or clipping. That side, there is a little bit more caution with those houses that back right up, because they're really close.
Yeah.
And that's what their concern is, so they're kind of coming up with an approach that's safe as well.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have a question?
My, Andrea, you pretty well hit it already. I saw that the control burn was in there every year, and I was just going to ask why it was in there every year. It may be necessary, it may not be necessary, but I was just going to ask about that, so... And then the other, I guess, not question, but concern is, over the years, that control burn has slipped, because, well, it's too wet, or, well, they're busy. So, what kind of control are we going to have on that with V3 to make sure it does get done?
Well, part of that, I will say, was my oversight and looking at some of this stuff, too, because the original burn was like the swath along the channel, and previously before that, Noel was here, and we kind of did the whole thing, and then I think it just had slipped, but now it's on the radar, it will not be missed. So, they will have it scheduled, and hopefully we'll get it, the spring's a lot easier, I've been told, to get that burn, because the fall is a much narrower window with trying to make sure everything's dry and the snow doesn't hit it. So, once you miss that window, you may not get that back. This year, I think, was a very quick season for it, but we got it in, so hopefully it'll be in the spring.
Yeah, that's all we have. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to offer up, obviously, you all know, and I've been on a campaign about this for the last couple of years. I think now, with Andrea's help, we've got this thing pretty well under control as far as at least understanding that we do have the potential, if needed, that we can burn at any time we want to in a year. And I've had several opportunities to talk with the county leadership about this. They understand clearly where we're at, and their specific interest is the stretch between Randall Road going east to Fabian Parkway behind the new Sierra Trading Company that's going to go in, or Circuit City, because they just got their building permit application today. So, that'll be a new store going in there, but that's where Smash Burger and all those other people are. Then the county is understanding that we do need to have a regular maintenance on that thing, and I think we are coming to, we're communicating about it, and I think part of the problem was, there was a couple of years' stretch of time there where the county was in the process of changing faces and doing a bunch of stuff, and we were having some of the same stuff here, and we didn't really get as much ahead of the game as we should have with the thing. But I'm feeling very comfortable now, thanks to the leadership in the engineering department, that we have got control over this thing, and hopefully we can go forward and not let it get to, you know, that thing can be really high-profile in such areas as everybody, and I swear everybody in town must be there, in the drive-through window that goes around Portillo's. I mean, everybody's obviously sitting there after they've ordered their stuff, and they're waiting to get in through that long line, and they're sitting there looking at all this stuff growing there, and there's all kinds of imagination that this is poison ivy and noxious weeds, and the stuff is higher than their car. And so, it's something that can generate a lot of conversation, because it is probably one of the most visible areas in the whole town. I mean, it's a weed patch, but that's because of where it sits and what's right next to it, everybody watches it. So, that, plus, you know, we've got responsibility to the homeowners in the Braburn subdivision, many of whom who probably paid a premium for their lots so that they could back up to this thing. And when it first started, it was a beautiful area, it was, water feature was there, and now, over the years, it's kind of grown up into this kind of thing out of control, and we've hopefully got the understanding now that we'll keep it burned down so that people can look at the water as, well as people, it's a beautiful entrance coming into Batavia on Randall Road, if, as long as it's maintained. But if it isn't, it's a problem, and Alan just mentioned, we got rid of that berm or whatever it was, it was right there by Randall Road, so the water can flow through there quicker. And, you know, our friends in Geneva would like to widen the pipe up so they could get more water through there quicker, but, you know, that's all been engineered so that everybody retains a certain amount of water, and we don't flood anybody, hopefully. That's the ideas behind this thing. So, this thing has been kind of a work in progress since it started many years ago, and I'm comfortable now that I think we do have control over it, so my two cents for the night.
And I'd like to add that from where we stopped, where Branson pretty much deadens in the Windermere subdivision, and to the Braburn Marsh going to the Nikor Gas Easement to the west, is, that was never part of the original permit, but it is in need of some work. And it's on our radar. Unfortunately, it's not, you know, up higher than the Area 3 storm sewer, and there's only so many funds, but it is one area that we are definitely looking at widening the channel and getting the channel back and established. We've gotten many calls over the winter this past year, and Scott Haynes has been out there diligently taking care of our beaver friends that also help dam up that area, so, you know, it makes it known that we still do need to also consider putting some funds towards improving that area as well to help the water move through that area.
Okay, would anyone care to make a motion on resolution 17-107-R?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Should we talk about that one?
Yeah, I think we should talk about that.
Okay. All right, item number nine, which is discussion for the deposition of the Tomley Building. Alderman Stark, I believe this is yours.
Yep. Okay, so, as we all know, the city currently owns the Tomley Building, which is located at 2 East Wilson Street. He purchased it in 1995 for $75,000. It was built in 1881. It's 1,472 square feet, two-story structure, and there is a 700, plus or minus, plus or minus 700 square foot floor below street level that's presently uninhabitable. The building footprint covers approximately 20% of the parcel itself. Over time, the city has made, and other third parties have made, spent considerable funds to make and keep the building habitable and up to code, and most recently, the city has leased the property serving as a downtown short-term business incubator space, and Simonetti Studios do page cabinet and granite, and the current tenant, Vaughn Gifs, have all started their businesses there. The city has actually not listed the property with a commercial real estate broker. However, through its subscription with CoStar, the property has been publicly offered for sale with a sales set price of $160,000. Since 2013, we've received two formal TIF redevelopment proposals for the subject property. So, and the last one we all remember was the martini bar, and the developer was trying to secure the two adjacent properties. It didn't happen, we didn't approve it, so that fell by the wayside. So, recently, a newspaper article reintroduced the public to the Tomley Building, and Tomley Building had a sale price of $160,000. So, it wasn't, again, officially listed, was just put out there again. Within three weeks of that article, staff received no fewer than a dozen phone inquiries from persons interested in buying the property. And staff has walked through the building with five of the would-be buyers. It should be also noted that Main Street Executive Director Jamie Sam and Batavia Chamber President and CEO Holly Deichman have expressed strong interest in having the city continue to use it as an incubator space. So, we have some alternatives that staff has put before us. They don't have any specific recommendation for our consideration.
put before us. They don't have any specific recommendation for our consideration. So that's the bottom line in terms of staff recommendation. Although I think the one statement that stood out in this is that further staff knows, or, no, that says municipalities are generally not in the business of acting as landlord for a private business interest, and the responsibilities associated with this role can prove to consume city time and resources. So that is just part of this memo. I wanted to make sure that I didn't gloss over that. So there are five options that staff put before us. The first one is to continue, for the time being, utilizing the building as a business incubator space, leasing the building to start up small businesses for a period generally not to exceed one year, which is what we're doing right now. The second would be to sell the property with the condition that the buyer continues to offer the building as an incubator space at a discount rental rate. City may or may not agree to provide a subsidy, presumably from purchase proceeds, to make actual rental rate or near-market rate. So in my mind, I look at that and think, well, maybe Main Street and the Chamber want to buy it. Third, sell the property with the condition that the would-be buyer presents a property redevelopment plan involving significant investment to grow the value of the property. This could be a public-private partnership under the state of Illinois Tax Increment Financing Authorities, which is, of course, what we tried to do the last time. Sell the property outright with no conditions. However, however, either alone or working with Batavia, Main Street, and/or the Chamber develop a long-term small-business incubator program wherein the city would use the funds, proceeds from the property sale to fund such program, essentially offering subsidy funds to any downtown property owner or manager willing to offer building space or below-market rent rates to qualifying small-business startups. And then five, sell the property outright with no conditions. Deposit the sales proceeds from the city's general fund with no restrictions as to the future use of these funds. So there's no timeline. We can consider it. We can make a recommendation to staff as to what we should do. And that is what has been brought before us tonight, because as we all know, there has been a lot of interest in this building. I know the person who's currently interested in renting it after, if it were to go to the next round of this. But we have to make a decision. And, you know, the lease will be up again in January, and so, you know, it's not too early to start talking about it. Scott?
So there were no less than eight people that were interested in this, correct? I mean, given that, it sounds like there's some, there's some play out there where there could be some bidding for it, which is great for us in terms of, I mean, personally, I think we should have no role in dictating what any purchaser should do with this building, whether it's incubator space or anything like that. They're going to buy it, provided they, they're following our ordinances and all that? Power to them.
Well, let me, it's just so funny, when you've been around long enough, that you hear the arguments over and over again. The last time we discussed this, it was, this is the last piece of property downtown Batavia that's on the riverfront, and we should make sure that we make a good, we should sell it to a good developer so that that piece of property can be used well. I'm just echoing Bill McGrath. You can hear his voice somewhere in this room. Lucy?
I agree with Bill McGrath. I, I would prefer option one or three, and hope that continue operating as an incubator. But I wonder if Main Street is so interested in keeping it, whether they could take over the property management of it. So, and it seems to me perhaps we may have offered it at a too low a price if we got so many people so quickly. I don't know that we'd want to get into a bidding war, but maybe we take it off for the market for a while and maybe put it back on at a different price in, a little bit later.
It's not on the market, though.
Well, or offered, a price was published, is the way I understand it.
An old price.
It's in CoStar as a property that is available.
For sale?
For sale.
At that price, okay. So I don't know if that's the right price or not, and maybe we should consider it. But I would hope that whoever went in there, if we weren't using it as an incubator, did use the riverfront, because we have enough properties downtown that have been developed that have not used the riverfront. And we are kicking ourselves when we walk by them and say, why wasn't that done?
Dan?
I would say if $160,000 was the right price, it would have sold by now. I don't think there's enough interest in, in the future of this property for someone to take it over. And I'm curious what the mayor should say. What, the people that were kicking the tires? Are these serious buyers? Is something going to legitimately come from this? Or would we benefit by keeping it an incubator for a few more years as the commercial rental market or commercial building market improves? Because this could be worth a lot more money in five more years.
Well, the one thing I've heard from at least two or three that have been in chatting with me, and maybe holding it as an incubator, maybe not be a bad idea, my view, because the one thing I keep apparent to people is, is that several people are of the opinion that this represents one of the best restaurant, future restaurant sites in Batavia. That it's very pretty, that stretch of the river going south from there, what's on the other banks is very, you know, receptive, and it just makes for a nice, easy area. You've got a parking lot right behind it, and while there may be some private ownerships there, maybe that gets cleared out as time goes on. We've already invested another parking lot right across the street. So the perceptions are, is that if development is taking place around it, that precipitates the ability to somebody to go in there and do a nice restaurant. And the idea would be, I think that you would have the kitchen on the first floor, maybe the Wilson Street level, and that the restaurant would all be in a new building that would be built going south from the existing structure. And when this was the Chicago Roaring Elgin Railroad Station down there, there was a building over that. That's why the building is, is not as far back from the street as all the rest of the buildings in the block, because there was this big structure where you used to get out, and this streetcar could pull right in underneath the canopy of it, and people could be out of the weather and whatever have you. So there was a, a much bigger building there at one point in time that was all tore down in about 1956, when the third rail left business. But the idea that, you know, I've had, I had a gentleman from Geneva who I think is one of the bidders on this thing, tell me he thought it was one of the best sites in the tri-cities to make an investment for a future restaurant to put in there. And he says, the first one comes in and doesn't make it, it's all going to be about the value of the food, or the taste of the food, because the site's going to be dynamite.
With the, the space being next to that old right-of-way, I remember there was one developer that proposed bringing a railcar in at some place that...
I haven't heard that recently, but the railway, you know, got, the right-of-way got altered, and we put the bike trail underneath the bridge. And so that was done many years ago as part of a reenactment of, realignment of that to kind of straighten this out. I guess I would share the view that I think this is a great site for a restaurant at some future time, whether it's now or five years from now. So I would hate to see us just arbitrarily sell it to somebody who, I don't know what they would do with it.
And that's kind of my point. I, I wouldn't want to sell it to sell it. I'd rather sell it to the right person. I'd rather have incubator space in there, and so this property is worth something. I think four or five years from now, this is going to be worth a lot of money.
I mean, we've had, recently, we've had very good luck with the tenants we've had in there. I mean, DuPage Counter tops started there. Now, the new gift shops in there, they seem to be doing okay, from what I can tell. They're, they maintain their building, they clean the windows. This place used to have a reputation 40 years ago. They had a pet store in there, and the pet store went bust in the middle of the night, and they had a fish tank in the window, and the fish tank cracked open and leaked out. And so for several months, this is, now, this is before I was the mayor, there were all these dead fish laying in a tank in the window of that place. And that was, became quite the community conversation. Alderman Brown will remember that. And so when I was first elected, one of the things that we did was make, take actions to acquire this, and we had to do this by eminent domain, just because the ownership had just totally kind of walked away from it. And we got it relatively cheap. And so whatever we sell it for, we will have made money, and we will have created new business in the downtown, because, you know, Fawn and DuPage Counter tops are, I think, are both viable future businesses for the community. So there's, there's been some very positive things happen here. But I, I just feel that this is a good opportunity for us to make sure the right thing goes in there, and this restaurant does get built back in.
How many years ago was, did we take it over in eminent domain? It says in here somewhere, I think, 1995. So we've had it for 22 years. We've had three businesses in it for three years.
Three successful.
Three successful businesses in it for three years. We don't collect property tax on it because the city owns it. We put in a sizable investment in it to bring it up to code and to keep it up to code standards. I'm having a hard time seeing a business of good value proposition here, party.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's served its purpose, which was, at a certain period in time, the downtown needed some revitalization. I, I think it has served that purpose by showing the market that something will win there. By its own, like you said, by its own very example. Three successful businesses have now started and grown in there. And for the longest time, the Pumpkin Patch, Gunter's Building, was empty for the longest time. That is no longer the case. We're having this perception of all these empty storefronts, but there's really nothing left. And at some point, the government should not be in private business management of buildings. If it's not going to be a public-use building, then it should be, let the market decide what it should be. Now, we can have, clearly establish some goals in there, which we already do have with historic preservation. I don't think anybody wants to see this building come down. I don't think the community wants to see it come down. So we could put those guarantees in there, while at the same time, at some point, let the little baby fly out of the nest and go on its own, and let the market decide for what that building. I think it's, what it should be, is we're going to have a bunch of bidders on it, and I would welcome a bidding war, because then that is a sound investment that the city made.
Dave?
Yeah, I, I mean, I certainly agree. I understand what the mayor's saying, and can understand why the Main Street would like to see it stay as an incubator. It's a success. It's a great thing. It's, it works, it helps them sell downtown. I understand that. Although, I can remember when we did take this over through eminent domain, and, you know, we, we had the discussion at that time about, was it the appropriate use for taxpayers' dollars to use to buy a building? And then, what are we going to do with it? So the idea at that time was, well, you know, we can't let it just sit here in disrepair. And at that time, there were holes in the roofs, and pigeons in it, and everything else. And so we really, we had no choice but to, to take it under our control. But the discussion was to get it back on the market as soon as possible, because we were going to have to stick a lot of money into it to get it up to code, as you mentioned, and put a roof on it, and, and heat it, maintain it. And all this during the meantime, then, it's not bringing in any tax dollars. There has been a couple of offers on it, which haven't panned out. I, I would be in favor of going out for requests for proposal and qualifications from a potential buyer, and listen to what they've got to say. I don't think we ought to just put it on the market and let somebody buy it and put a go-kart shop in there, or a snowmobile shop in there, as it once was. It's too valuable, a piece of property, to see just somebody just do whatever with. But I certainly think that now's the time that we should be putting it back on the market to, to see what somebody would be interested in doing. And, and going through that process, Scott, set me straight if I'm wrong, but with a request for qualification and/or proposal, you know, we don't have to sell it. We don't like what somebody's offering to do. We can say, no, it just doesn't work out.
You're not under any obligation to sell it.
I'm sorry?
You're not under any, any obligation to sell it.
Right. Well, that would be my two cents. I think we should see what kind of interest there is. Put it for sale, sell it, and get it back on the tax roll.
My concern, as we talk through this, is, to use a gambling term, we're betting on the come, on a lot of these things. We now own the One North Washington property. We own all the old Larson Becker property. We own the building where the, what's that called? That Blacksmith shop, that building, and the building next to it, the tin shop, and all the property north of that. We own the lot next to my house. We keep betting on, at some point in the future, which I've been hearing for the last six years, the property's going to get valued, developers are coming to town, and it's going to sell like crazy. We're going to make a ton of money, and we're the land, we're currently the landholders. And so for six years, we've been saying that, and I am not hearing a ton of developers pounding on the doors saying, at any moment, we're going to turn all this into the best property ever. And so when I look at the Tomley Building, I say, okay, so what if someone does open a candy store there? And maybe that's not the best use, and maybe that's the temporary use. But then, the economy improves in five years and gets better, and someone says, okay, let's put a restaurant in here, and the candy shop is gone. I mean, you know, we, we are, yes, we are supposed to be long-term strategic thinkers, but is, are we doing ourselves any favors by buying up all this land and sitting on it? I don't know. So Alan, you had a comment?
Yeah, one of my comments with it is, I think it's time to do it, is now, not wait till something else happens within the downtown area that makes this property more viable. This is within a TIF?
Yes.
And how many more years are left on that TIF?
Not a lot.
Not much? See, that's one of my other things, is if we are going to try to provide any kind of assistance or any kind of impetus to somebody to, to put money into this or add to it, to raise the value on it, there's not going to be a whole lot available from the TIF. So if that's the case, we need to do it now rather than wait. Or else, there won't be much of anything that we can provide for assistance that will pay for itself.
Scott?
And I, I think, one, one other thing to address the concern about Main Street and, and the Chamber, and, you know, in this incubator space. I, I know that's, that's a nice relationship to have. I, it's, there's nothing stopping them from developing relationships with other property owners and, and doing that same thing with empty space, that, you know, that's, that's out there. And maybe Mark and Susan could write another story, and we can get another eight people involved. That would be great.
I think it's interesting, the Tea Tree opened at the same time Fawn did, almost within a few months. The Tea Tree got financial assistance from the city in terms of grants. Fawn got reduced space on the rent. They're, they're both doing well. So can we prove out that the incubator space works better than a landlord leasing? I'm not sure we can. So that's where I look at these, these businesses and say, okay, parallels here. Why, why are we landlords? So Laura?
I just wanted to mention that the sale of the Tomley Building and the continuation of a incubator space program are not mutually exclusive. Also, the state of Illinois recently ended a microloan program, of which we were a beneficiary. They notified us of the termination of that program and said you can use whatever funds you have left. The funds that we have left at this time are about $26,000. And so one of the ideas that is presented here is to sell the building, especially where somebody presents a redevelopment plan that offers a significant increase in the value of the building, and to utilize the proceeds from that sale to fund an incubator program. Chris Aiston and I met with both Main Street and with the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the things they suggested was having a more formalized program that has an educational component to it, to assist those new businesses with learning finance, the marketing aspect of the business, and all of the different things that they need to know as a brand-new business owner. But I do think that there's a significant value in allowing, in providing some funds to kindle and foster new businesses like this. And we have had several successes doing so. But having it in the Tomley Building, one of the things that's always been a bit counterintuitive to me is that if they're a success, then they move out. And although Simonetti Studios and the countertop place have been successful in their second locations and are still ongoing businesses, I imagine that that's a significant, initially a significant setback that a new fledgling business would have to overcome. So maybe we would want to consider an incubator program that allows the business to remain in place. And that's why we were thinking of this idea of perhaps some type of subsidy on the rent that they pay in a, in a different space. But then they would take over the market-rate rent at the end of that program time.
I guess...
Oh, sorry, Elliot?
Sorry. No, I think from, from my standpoint, I, I agree with the notion that I don't think the city should be landlords. I think we do already have enough property on that east side of the river. You already rattled off a bunch of them. You know, we keep trying to sell the land over here on the west side, that, that it looks like we finally got a nice, you know, development package going towards residential. This property, if, if it truly does have eight bidders out there, fantastic. Maybe it's a restaurant, maybe it's not. But either way, I think it'll become something valuable, because it's going to be right there along the river in high visibility. I, I like the idea of the incubator space program. I don't know exactly what that program needs to be, but I definitely like the idea of working with Main Street to help foster those new small businesses starting up in our own downtown area. So maybe that is a separate discussion that we should have.
Dan?
Part of what made the incubator program, excuse me, work and make it so attractive was that we had this piece... had this piece of property where people could go into. If we get rid of that property and we take the proceeds of the sale of that property, we've now set a sunset on the incubator program, because we will eventually spend all of those dollars. So, that means we have to make a value judgment on whether or not we wanna continue that program and continue to have the city fund. So, we're not a landlord anymore, but we're still subsidizing businesses. So, we need to make a value judgment or a philosophy judgment, is that something we wanna be in that business? So, it's a whole different discussion.
It is. And I think, you know, that if we look at businesses, you know, a great example of a very successful business in our downtown, a small business, got no help from the city, is Beardsgard. I mean, they are running a gangbusters business. The Salvage Heart is doing very well, got no money from the city. There are a lot of companies, businesses in town that do well, because they started out with a plan. And so, if our subsidy comes in the way of helping to pay for education, to get people out to Wabansy, to get them out to the small business program, that's great. But, you know, being a landlord or subsidizing small businesses to come into town just seems like a stretch, in terms of what government, our government should do. So, I don't know what the answers are.
It just feels like turning this property loose and just letting whoever buy it, and then they get to make all the profit that we've been hanging onto it for all these years. It still, it hurts a little bit.
Take it off the market, sell for $250.
We haven't held on to every piece of property that we have. There is a Speedway station that did make us quite a bit of money when we sold that piece of property. So, we have to remember that, and yes, I know we're gonna sit on some property for a while, but in the end, when we do sell these, they are gonna bring quite a bit more money back in than what we have into them.
But the, you're right, Alan, but the idea there is to sell them and sell them. Not hang on, not consciously make the decision to keep it as an incubator, is what we're discussing here tonight, you know, and that's why, you know, I, my vote is for getting a request for proposals out there and see what we can, see what we can drum up.
Susan?
Um, I...
Susan? No, Scott would be up to talk.
Oh, sorry.
Scott?
Scott.
Meeting out here.
Over here.
No, no, I was funny. You're funny, Alan. I didn't see Scott.
It's not funny, Susan. One last thing, I might, in regards to going out to a proposal, which I think is a good idea, I'm going to start banging the drum on making sure that when we're, you know, our economic development, or community development, economic development, is we're going out there and we are targeting those businesses that we want. If we want, if we want the Tomley Building to be a restaurant, great, let's put a package together and sell it as a restaurant, and target those restaurateurs that might wanna come down here and do it. So, I, you know, just to throw the shingle out, is not good enough. If we want a restaurant in here, let's put the plan together and sell it as a restaurant.
Could we get maybe an opinion or a comment from staff on this? Because I have no idea who these eight people are that have been here, been in here talking about this, and maybe Scott's got some good information here that he...
A dozen.
Dave, a dozen.
Sure? I'm sorry?
A dozen. Staff received no fewer than a dozen phone inquiries.
A dozen.
A dozen. And five would be buyers?
Yeah, most of those were fielded by Chris, actually. So, I had fielded a couple of them myself, and, you know, people were interested in the property for the value that it was, and I don't think we had anybody in eye contact or to contact me that said specifically what they were looking to do with it, but they thought it was a good investment property.
I had one that was specifically a restaurant.
Did they all have their hands out, or were they all...
Well, I think they, the ones that I talked to, at least, I think they saw the price of it as being, you know, a good price for what they're getting. I mean, you're getting the building, you're getting land, there's a couple parking spaces that come with it. Granted, it's gonna be difficult to build an addition onto it, because it's mostly floodplain on the back area there, so, you know, you may be able to put a deck or something like that on there and elevate it, but putting an actual building addition is probably gonna be challenging.
I mean, that's my, you know, I guess kinda what I was looking for, too, was out of these dozen people or so that have been interested, it's great to have interest, but as soon as they look into it and realize that the parking lot that's behind it that they think may come with it doesn't come with it, and there's a floodplain and there's everything else, so, at the end of the day, how much interest is you're really in it?
I think that, you know, I'm not sure, we need to, oh, oh, sorry, I thought you were waving. I'm not sure if we need to give staff direction, if we have a clear and concise direction to give staff. You know, I think Dave's idea to send it out for a, put together an RFP packet, you know, makes sense. It's not taking any definitive action today.
Thoughts on that, Scott?
Yeah, and that's kinda what we did a few years ago, when the Teeny Lounge and some others that, you know, came in here were interested, so we did put a RFP together, and that's how we got some of that interest at that time, so...
And my point is, how would it be different this time?
Yeah.
Well, in that one, I think we wanted a more comprehensive proposal when we, when we put that together. We wanted something more than just buy the building. I think we had more of a development, redevelopment proposal that came with that. It wasn't just a, you know, here's what we'll buy it for. So, you know, we could, we could put it together where we could have both options for people to put together, if they wanna just buy it, or if they have a, an idea for how they wanna redevelop the property, we can put it together that way as well.
Oh, Nick?
I'll add my two cents. I think our revenue model is to put it on the tax rolls and get tax from it, not speculate in the real estate market in the future and whatnot, even though it may look great, that's not what we do. I was gonna say what Scott said, that this would be a better conversation with Chris here. He's the one with his ear to the floor and knowing what's out there. I think we all, I mean, I would like to see it on the market, the open market, with having maybe a little direction of what we want in there. You know, I don't want, you know, we don't want something bad in there, and if we can direct it towards a restaurant, I would say, let's put an RFP together, and also, maybe continue this conversation with Chris here and see what's out there and what we can do to market what we want. I think we're all in consensus of what we'd like to see there.
So, should we wait and have a conversation with Chris before we direct staff to start the RFP process, or should we start the RFP process and then have a conversation with Chris subsequently? Talk to Chris first?
I think, I think it would make sense that Laura then talks now with Chris and says that it seems as a consensus of the committee was that we'd like to get it off of our plate and onto someone else's, with the idea that we go out for an RFP to see what somebody may be interested in doing. And let Chris ponder on that a little bit, and maybe even bring back something as a draft form for us to consider.
Sounds good. So, do you have enough traction on that?
I mean, I'm kinda seeing that maybe Lucy's the only one here that doesn't really necessarily agree with that, but...
No, no, I agree with the RFP. I would like to make sure that we sell to someone that will create value downtown. I think we're spending a lot of time doing economic development.
Right.
And we've held this property a long time for that purpose, so I wouldn't, I'm in favor of seeing a strong proposal from the buyer.
Do you wanna pick up the incubator program discussion again as well?
I'd be happy to do that.
But again, that's a separate issue.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. What's, what I'm thinking is, we need to make sure we use that riverfront.
So, October 17th, I'm presuming, not October 10th?
Not October 10th.
I'm avoiding that date.
Start writing. That sounds good.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go on now to item number 10, which is discussion on the education assistance program. And Laura, you gonna start us out with that?
Yes. The city, for a number of years, had an educational assistance program that provided reimbursement to employees who sought classes and higher education that were a complement either to their current position or one that they wished to attain in the future. And due to the economic downturn in 2008, that program was eliminated, and we'd like to make a proposal that the program be reinstated, and so Wendy is here tonight to talk about that.
Great. As Laura had mentioned, prior to 2008, we had what was considered a tuition reimbursement program. It was part of a policy in our employee handbook, and when that program ceased, while there still is the day-to-day required training that is funded, and as you see in the budget process, that is, has been happening in each of the departments, based on specific certifications or, or whether it's driving or different things that they need, are required to have, that is still being funded, but specifically in what I consider an educational assistance program, which is allowing employees, while they're in our employ, employment, to seek educational assistance at a higher level, whether it's for a degree or classes specifically in an accredited college or university, that is going to be towards the type of work that they do here at the city. So, with that, when talking with department heads and looking at the policy, and then also still working on the employee handbook, brought forward an educational assistance program. The basics of it, it didn't change a whole lot in the basics of it, in the fact of the program, is going to allow an employee to, I guess you'd say, apply, fill out a form and say, hey, look, I'm looking at either going for a degree or just taking a particular class, and outlining what that looks for, looks like. The part that we've changed a bit is that, well, it would then go to the department head, and this would all happen during the budget process, and then from there, that would be administered through the HR department. So, this in 2018, we're talking with Peggy, we're in a sense, some monies aside, that is going to go into my budget, and based on, as you can imagine, it's gonna be based on the requests. And also, going forward from year to year, it's, of course, totally going to be based on the financial ability for the city to pay. So, there is going to be some limitations if, and then, kind of unrealistic, if, you know, we had 30 people apply, of course, that could be very costly to the city, so we would manage that through the amount of funds that is available, which the policy clearly outlines of what's available. The policy is reimbursing of the class itself, and it is reimbursed based on the employee's performance, so what grade they get, and they have to provide that back to us, and it's reimbursed after the class itself. And so, we would then, they would supply that during the budget process, they would be reviewed, and then we would get back to all of the employees and letting them know whether they're approved or not, and then that would go forward from year to year. So, that's kind of the basics of the program, and wanted to kinda, to make you guys aware of that we are hoping to, there's, as you can imagine, there's a lot of benefits to the program, even just internally to the city, from a succession planning perspective, allowing employees that then can receive future degrees within their field of work that they're doing, and then they're getting them ready for that next level, that next promotion, that supervisor level, that sometimes, while they may have the work experience and understand the city, but they may not have that educational background when they originally came to us. So, it gives us that opportunity for that within each department. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yes?
First, lovely, lovely idea. I think that is hugely beneficial for the employees. My question is, if it's, we have a certain pool of money for this, and let's say we have 30 people that want to do something, what is that criteria for selection and for awarding that to those people? How is that done?
So, what they would do on a year-to-year basis, with talking with Peggy, we would determine what funds we would be able to available, and determine, say we said it was $20,000, and then based on the applications. And by administering that through my office, so then all of the applications come into one location, so we're able to evaluate those, see what the total cost is, and if it is above that, then we would go through and fairly say that this is what is going to be able to be approved, percentage-wise, to be fair, across all people that have applied.
Two questions. One, is this strictly non-union employees?
It's actually all employees.
All employees.
Yeah, most of the contracts, and I'd have to, just to confirm this, but I looked at them, most of them actually have language in the fact that they say, hey, we get what the tuition reimbursement program said in the handbook itself.
Second question, is there, is there any kind of programs, like with Wabansy, or any state school, that we can partner with and say, hey, if we send, we're looking to provide this, can we send our, we wanna send them to you, and can we get a discount or anything? Is there any communication?
Currently, right now, I'm not aware of any, but in the past, there definitely have, especially from a public safety perspective. There have been many colleges because of federal funding and state funding. For example, Benedictine College, a few years ago, provided law enforcement degrees completely free to police officers and firefighters that wish to pursue their education. Currently, right now, there also is, which this is, would almost in a way be separate from the educational assistance, just almost to the general public and enticing people to work in public service, is that the federal government has a loan forgiveness program. If you put a certain amount of time in public service, you're working in a public sector entity. So, there is definitely some other programs in that realm that are available to people who, they come to us with their degree and unfortunately have then a lot of loan debt. By giving us their time, then the federal government would reimburse them or do a loan forgiveness.
I love the program, too. I've worked at many employers that have had it, and it's great. One thing to consider is something that, after they've received the degree and they've gotten their money, that there's a requirement that they continue to work for the city for a period of time, because I've seen somebody quit right after they got the money, and...
Yeah, they're actually, with written in the policy, is we have a, I guess you'd say, a wage garnishment approval they would sign upfront, and then also a contract saying that within a 12-month period, if they leave within that, they would have to reimburse us. So, absolutely, we would, that would all need to be signed prior to them even being approved. So, in the case where I've seen that happen, unfortunately, somebody leaves, and in the state of Illinois, you can't necessarily, like, take their last paycheck, they have lots of rules for that kind of stuff, so, yeah, it kinda gets you caught.
Yep.
So...
We're using this as a benefit to the employees, but it's also a reason to stay employed. It's kind of a cool thing your employer does. I've heard of friends that have been in programs like this, where the football got taken away at the last minute, you didn't qualify for this, or, oh, that class isn't really, have anything to do with what you, whatever.
Right.
I would support, if 30 people wanted to do this program and we had to pony up and pay for it, if that meant that these people were gonna stay employed by us for five years, that seems like an investment in an employee. That doesn't seem like a bad problem to have.
Absolutely, and I think as year-to-year, if we did have something like that, then absolutely, we would say, what's the total cost to this? And we would, you know, we'd have to answer the question, can we truly afford to pay for it? And in what way would we be able to? And if we could, absolutely, I think overall, I would prefer not to just have a cap, a hard and fast cap, and if the program's being very successful for us as well as our employees, then, and we have the funds to be able to pay for it, I think it's definitely something we would bring to you guys and say, hey, this is why we're asking for this type, this amount of money for that program.
In the long run, you would agree it's better to have a position filled, as opposed to an empty position that you now have to fill?
Absolutely. And additionally, there's, there's other, a lot of positions, I think we've seen in recent years, in some of the fields of public safety, in the police field specifically, a lot of our candidates are actually coming to us with undergrad degrees already, where years ago, they weren't. So, they were coming in and getting their degree. So, if anything, they may then even be able to take advantage of this program and get even a higher ed-type degree, but then some of the other areas that I think is so beneficial is our public, our public works department, because many of them come in at a young age. I mean, it's just what they do, come in as a laborer, and they're definitely knowledgeable and have the ability, but they just don't have the education. And so, if someone was really wanting to do this, this is a fantastic program for them to be able to do that.
That's why it breaks my heart to put a cap on this. I'd rather invest in the employee.
Sure.
Wendy, is it possible for us to be able to get a copy of what the policy is?
Yes, it's actually posted on, in the public folder.
Oh, that's right, it is. And I didn't go to that, thank you. It's not linked, and so, I took the label out. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out the promotional opportunities that this affords us as an employer, that it allows employees to grow within the organization. They can be hired at an entry-level position, and through both their job experience here and knowledge of our organization, and the opportunities for higher education to move all the way up through the ranks of the organization, which is a benefit to them and a huge benefit to us, not to have to recruit high-level management positions from outside our organization.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm fully in support of this, because it's investing in your staff, and the return on investment on that, of startup costs on new employees are always much greater in the long run. Another way to kinda maximize the benefits on this, what about those ones that already do have degrees or advanced degrees, working in a, into the professional designations portion of it, where those don't necessarily cost as much, but still give a great return, where people can, they already have their degrees, but they're now specialized in their field, where, you know, some of those coursework is, you know, $500, $1,000 for some of those designations that really... is, you know, $500, $1,000 for some of those designations that really ultimately would give those employees a leg up over anyone else for minor costs.
Correct. And I think that does happen in some departments, especially if we consider it a requirement for someone's job. If, for example, an engineer, if we say that an engineer needs to be a PE, then we, we would help provide them with, as long as they pass it, help provide them with their recertification and so forth. But absolutely, this is, I think we can have that conversation. The other piece of it that we amended in this policy that wasn't included before is, as you can imagine, the look of education has changed too. And it's not a traditional, hey, I'm going to go to a class at night. There's online programs, there's accelerated programs and they're all accredited, not all of them, but many of them are accredited and worthwhile programs. So we've built some language in there to be able to review that. And as those things meet the needs of the employee as well as the city, we can approve those programs as well.
Just a clarification question, I'd be, I definitely fully support this. I've been with many companies that offer educational assistance and it's fantastic. Not just towards degrees though, towards certifications, towards seminars?
Currently, the way that policy reads it's for degrees as well as like particular coursework, like continuing ed. So, so if it's through an accredited.
Accredited.
Yeah, like if I wanted to take a particular HR class that would teach me something that, that's through a college, it is true like college course, but I'm not necessarily working towards a degree.
Okay.
But you may also be referencing seminars that are provided by professional organizations and those are ordinarily handled under the training budget for each individual department.
Good.
I have one more question or comment. You know, I'm always going to support education and, you know, I think it's a fantastic program. I'm just curious of our, the neighboring towns around here, are you aware of whether they're doing that?
Yeah, many, yeah, St. Charles, Geneva, many of them absolutely have programs. If anything, when I was talking with a few of them, they might have cut back just a little bit, but they actually didn't eliminate their program, so their programs are still in play, absolutely.
Okay. So all the more reason that we need to bring that back.
Absolutely.
So it sounds like the committee's in support of you working with Peggy to get this thrown into the budget.
Absolutely. Yeah, so what we're going to do is we've reviewed the policy, we're going to actually get it out to the employees, letting, giving them a deadline because we need it for the budget process, reintroducing the program and finding out where the interest is into 2018 and then we'll have some idea of what we're going to, what's 2018's going to look like from a financial perspective.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, sounds good. Mary, you got anything on that?
Well-handled by the staff.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Wendy. All right, item 11, project status, Laura?
So today, we talked with our financial consultant, Kane McKenna, about revising the internal rate of return analysis on the Shodin project, One Washington Place. And they asked for a number of additional documents from the developer and it's going to take them probably a longer than a week to analyze that information and re-crunch those numbers for us. But I think that everyone here is anxious to hear from the developer what the proposed changes are to that plan. So let me know if you would still like the developer to be here on October 10th, I'm sorry, October 11th, so that he can give a presentation to you so that you can understand what the changes are that he's proposing. Because I think we can still move forward with that, knowing that we are going to have to have as an element of the decision-making that revise internal rate of return analysis from our financial consultant.
Well, what new numbers would Kane McKenna be evaluating if we haven't looked or seen of any proposed changes to understand what new numbers we may be talking about?
Well, it's a matter of timing, really, so that if they need 10 to 14 days to produce that analysis, we could wait until after the 11th, knowing that then it might be an additional two weeks for them to perform that analysis. Or we could have those two things going in conjunction with one another so that ultimately we can make the decision based on the, they're going to be taking a look at the construction bids that the developer received, they're going to be looking at the redevelopment agreement, they're going to be looking at the revised market analysis for rental rates as well as the, the changed pro forma numbers provided by the developer.
But I'm still confused, Laura, what new numbers, what bids did the developer receive? Because if we're talking somewhere's, whatever the number is over budget, but now we're looking at cutting the project in order to get it into budget, what new numbers would they be looking at?
They would be looking at the per-unit cost of construction as well as the per-parking space rate of construction.
Is this based on their new request, their new plan?
Right.
So we haven't seen it.
So you want to stop on the internal rate of return analysis?
I think so. Because I think, I think if the developer gets here and says, this is what I want to do with the building in order to build it for X amount of dollars and we don't like what he's saying, what's the point of evaluating it?
We still haven't had a chance to say no to retail on the first floor yet.
Right.
Okay. All right, put a stop.
I mean, maybe I don't understand what the whole thought process there is, but to me, I just don't think, it seems like we got the cart in front of the horse at that point.
Originally, I think, when the project was brought to you, and I wasn't here at that time, late 2015 or early 2016, I thought that perhaps it was brought as one package that here is what the developer is proposing and here is what our financial advisor has, our financial consultant has said in terms of the internal rate of return that the developer's expecting establishes the but-for analysis as to why the tax increment financing is necessary.
I don't think it was that formal, but that would have been great.
And so that's, that's why I was moving forward. I would have hoped to have the developer here and that IRR analysis on the same night for you.
Are you making this? Sorry, go ahead.
I'm a little foggy on something. I mean, from my, my understanding, the developer hasn't officially been in front of this group yet. They, we kind of gave them the opportunity to come in front of us and kind of do the heart attack test. Is that correct?
And that hasn't happened yet. I offered to do that and we said that we wanted to have a meeting with just us alone first and then.
Right, but wait, but I mean, way back before you were here, they came to kind of see if we were open. But in terms of our normal process, they haven't come before the city council. Am I right or wrong? I mean, do I not understand it correctly? Do you know what I'm saying? Okay.
They haven't, they haven't come back in front of you with any revised plan.
But there's a.
But the land use proposal, the original land use proposal, you're saying?
Okay, but as far as their actual number of units, was that our official?
One Washington Street, as we all may know it, is approved and ready to go. All they need to, all, all we need to do is to complete our RDA between each other.
Okay, I was thinking.
And they, according, I mean, they should have been under construction according to the original RDA by now. But because they came into this little snafu of over-budget, it slowed everything down. So now we're sitting here with, I don't remember if you were here at the last meeting, the meeting when we discussed this about 30 days ago, when we said, you know, staff brought to us that there were $6 to $8 million over budget.
Right, I was here, okay, yeah, now I, okay.
So now you remember where we're at.
It's all clear now.
So Laura, I think, went to them and said, hey, it sounds like the committee's not real receptive of any changes, but they're willing to listen to what you've got to say, but you got 30 days to say it.
Okay, I guess I was, I'm still a little confused because at that time, we hadn't fulfilled the requirements of the RDA, right?
Correct. They're not completely fulfilled, either one of us.
So I guess that's why, maybe why I thought it wasn't completely approved yet. But anyway, so we want to see them complete, we want to see their ideas before that we know whether it's worth the TIF funding. We want to go through that process.
We've already been through the complete TIF analysis.
Yeah, but now we have to go through it again if they make any changes.
If there is going to be changes made, it sounds like this should be reevaluated.
Exactly.
Does this have to go back to plan commission?
If there's changes made to the building and everything, it has to go back to the plan commission?
Yes.
The whole process, all over again.
HPC as well.
HPC as well.
So, okay.
So it's build it as-is, get it in, get it, you know, why you're over budget, I don't know, build it as-is, absorb the cost yourself, whatever the case is, or the city, as it was explained last time, or the city come up with some additional funds. We go, we explore, let the developer explore the.
Engineering changes.
Whatever zone it is, the tax-free zone.
Oh, yeah, the enterprise.
Enterprise zone, all those options that were out there. But the options that were thrown out there along with those was some reconfiguration to the building, elimination of certain things. And I don't think that there was much support of, a lot of that. So that's why we said, tell them there's not much support, but we're willing to listen, but we don't want to listen for more than 30 days.
And that's, time is our enemy here, so.
Not our enemy.
I'm getting the impression that based on us going to a financial analysis already, that there is some financial presentation that's been given to staff that we haven't seen. Is that correct? Because I'm, I was under the impression that we were just sitting back waiting to see what they were coming to us with.
Yeah.
So have they come with you guys with something and we're trying to work numbers and analyzing them? Is that what, where we're at? Because that seems different than what we were, what I was expecting, is that?
So on Tuesday of last week, we met for two and a half hours with the developer and they showed us what their changes and the, the financial analysis that they had of the, when you compose the different, the building differently with less commercial, additional residential units and the fewer parking spaces, the financial analysis of how it comes up to what it's going to cost to build a building that looks like that. Following that, on Thursday, staff met internally to discuss what we were shown. And from that meeting, we determined that we would not be able to make a recommendation to city council about what those proposed changes were until we saw a revised financial analysis. However, it's important that that information be presented to you. And so that, all of that information, in fact, will be public information that is going to be attached to the agenda item when, when the developer is going to come here to make the presentation.
So they haven't identified if the gap is closed or if the gap is closing yet? Because we're not even really there yet. The gap, the funding gap, has it gotten, has it gotten smaller?
Yes.
Has it gotten acceptably smaller?
And so that's what we can't answer. So acceptably smaller would be if we had the financial analysis. We would know that it's acceptably smaller. Scott, do you agree with me on that?
Yeah, and, and, you know, whether or not we can pay for it.
Right.
The TIF, you know, which is obviously a huge function of it too.
And part of that analysis would then, I'm assuming, include the city upping the amount of money that we were going to work with them with on the TIF?
So our RDA agreement provided that we were going to put out $14 million in bond initially and that there was an additional provision in the RDA that if the increment was sufficient, that the developer could be reimbursed for up to $16 million in cost. So that's that tail end, $2 million would be dependent upon the future increment. What they are proposing to meet the gap is that the city bond for the 16 million because it's not only dependent upon what the increment is, but we also have the SSA as part of the agreement, as well as they have agreed in principle to not only have the SSA, but also make gap payments early in the bond repayment schedule. Since the parking garage is being built first, the parking garage isn't going to generate any increment. But these were part of the RDA changes that we were making and they were very amenable to that. So just a basic thing about TIF is that the developer is utilizing the increment that would be created by their development to fund the development. And so in this case, in a traditional case, the, the development is constructed and then upon that increment, they can show their, their reimbursable costs, the costs that would be reimbursable under the statute, prove up those costs and then they get reimbursed off of any increment that comes. This agreement is different. This one has a significant public component, that being the building of a public parking garage to serve the city. And therefore, we were willing to agree to issuing the bond upfront so long as we had a belt and suspenders. And the belt and suspenders were having the SSA in place as well as having the insurance in place in addition to the bonding. So it's a bonded project, which means that the bond is for the full construction cost of the project so that if something happens to the developer in the meantime, while this is getting built, it still gets built because we're payable on that.
Are we okay talking at this depth of this?
It's, it's in the RDA. It's in the RDA, anybody could read this language.
I understand that, I mean, on the agenda tonight.
Right, because we're not going to have any action.
Laura, what's your recommendation? Do you think we should have both of them at the meeting on October 11th? The analysis and the changes?
We can't because the, the financial consultant said it won't be ready. My recommendation would be to have Dave here on the 11th.
But is your recommendation that we move along so that we have that information as quickly as possible? Or do you think we should wait until Dave Patzelt makes his presentation?
Is there a cost to us to get this information?
It's just a time factor, you know, once, if, if the project is going to move forward, there are still five months of things that need to get done before construction can begin.
But is there a cost for this consultant to evaluate it?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Because if, if we see they're changing plans and don't like them, it's a waste of money.
Correct.
That was my point.
Just to clarify, sorry, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of point out that we did do this process when they came to us initially with a proposal, which was 171 units with 340 spaces. So we did have that initial, I think to Dave's point, the initial heart attack test was, this is the program. And they ran their numbers originally. Then, what we did, and that's similar to what we're doing now, is we said, we would like this added to it, which was more parking. And they ran the numbers and that was what we used. Once we were figuring out what we wanted, then we said, does it financially work? Because it wouldn't make sense, just the same scenario, if they said, nope, we can't do more parking, or it was going to be 14 stories or whatever. We could have made those value judgments right there without even going. So I think that we've been following the same process that we normally do. It's, which is also deciding what we want, then figuring out if it can pay for itself. I, it's.
The, the original Kane McKenna analysis was done in August of 2015 and we didn't sign the RDA until September of 2016. If that offers sheds any light.
This isn't the first rodeo this developer's been to. He knows how to forecast cost.
That will be a question for the developer. I, I certainly am not qualified to answer that.
Right. And just to clarify, the closing of the funding gap, they are proposing less retail space and fewer parking spaces?
Yes, and more residential units.
I, my, I mean, we're probably getting way off base on this for me to say this, but again, my personal opinion on this is it's going to sink and die. I, in the 22 years I've been doing this, I have never had people come to my house, knock on the door or ring the doorbell, introduce themselves and say, I know you're my alderman. I've driven by your house many of years. I've never stopped to introduce myself, I've never stopped to talk to you. But I've read what's going on with this One Washington, I'm in favor of the project. Don't give them another dime and don't change from what the plan commission and you have already accepted. In 22 years, I've had three people stop that I have never met before and knock on my door. Three out of 27,000 isn't very many, I understand that. And I'm always been one that, you know, I'm here to represent my ward, but I'm also here to represent the entire city. So sometimes I'll vote against my ward if it's the right thing for the entire city. But I, and I said that, I had that opinion 30 days ago, before anybody knocked on my door. I still have it.
Hearing such strong opinions. Hearing such strong opinion, I'm not averse to telling the financial consultant to put the brakes on and wait until after the meeting next Wednesday.
I would agree with that.
Could we have some sort of, um, pro and con of more residential versus more commercial?
That's exactly what we're working on.
Okay. Because there are other areas for commercial nearby. And, okay, so that would be interesting for me to understand.
That is what we're preparing for that packet.
Good.
Okay, uh, the fractal sculpture was installed today.
Looked great.
On a lighter note. And also, I, uh, today, we ordered a clock for this room that will be a countdown clock that has a remote control that's with it, and, um, it gives a green light during, during the countdown, a yellow light at thirty seconds left, and a red light when your time has concluded. So on those nights when we have a need for, um, keeping the clock to offer maximum amount of public participation, um...
Is the clock going to be up here?
Yes.
So the public can see it?
Yes.
Let's get a mirror put up there so that people here can see it without them.
Sounds good.
We're not using it for the alderman, just the public.
Only the public and the staff. The chair that's supposed to be cutting somebody off isn't going to know when it's time to cut somebody off if they can't see it.
Could it have a Salvati? Ten second.
Um, I would just like to point out also that under executive sessions, um, we had a in there in case discussion of the timely building. We wanted to have that in executive session versus an open session, but since we had our discussion in open session, we can eliminate that first executive session. Um, and that's all I have unless somebody has questions for me.
What are we doing on store hedges? Is that going to be done before the mayor's, uh, people come into town?
I talked to Phil about it today.
It won't be here before the mayor's people are in town, unfortunately.
What is the, what is the new projected date, or should we just say twenty-twenty?
The next reunion?
He said soon.
Two weeks. What did he say to you, Susan?
Soon.
Oh, he said soon?
And I asked him if that was within the next calendar year.
Yeah. Soon.
Soon.
Um, I, I believe in the next couple of weeks. The panels are at the printer.
I thought the brackets broke. I thought the panels were done.
The, yeah, the, the brackets had to be redone, but he had the brackets out here last week or the week before, and with, he set them in the thing and they worked, so.
So.
He has the brackets. We just need the, the finished panels to affix to them.
They didn't want...
And believe me, if I knew how to print panels, I'd be over there doing it myself.
They didn't want to extra panels until the brackets were correct.
Yes, exactly.
So it was, uh, brackets first, panel second.
Right.
So that's where it is.
Well, the Golden Corral conversation has been surpassed.
Yep.
Anything else for others?
No, that's it.
Nope.
I got one.
Hansford?
Scott?
Hansford?
Oh, yes. Um, so the Hansford property, um, I wanted to ask you about right now, that is a, one of the properties that Mayor had mentioned when he was talking about some unsightly properties, and, um, we had discussed that we've gone through, um, numerous adjudications over this property. Um, Scott, maybe you can just give the update on where things are right now?
Sure, yeah. We have gone through adjudication. We, um, had a court order to prevent the, um, would-be heirs from occupying the property because they kept bringing stuff in, not maintaining the property. So we have a court order to prevent them from actually entering the property at this time. Um, and we are trying to figure out what our next steps are in order to do that. We do, are, we are maintaining the property, we're mowing it, all the debris, all the other squatter-type things have been removed, the property, the building has been boarded up. Um, but in talking with our attorney, the next step really would be to try and enter into the foreclosure action, uh, to essentially get our money back for what we've spent so far on the property. I mean, we do have the property lien, so, uh, before the property can be sold, we would still get our money back, but, uh, this would be a way to get it back as, as fa, in a faster way as part of the foreclosure proceedings. So, um, that was kind of the next step we were looking at, and we wanted to get some guidance from the council first before we did that. Our legal fees that we'd be looking at would be somewhere between fifteen hundred dollars and five thousand dollars, depending on how complex it gets to be. We can recover those costs again because we could lien the property or have that as part of the whole proceed court proceedings here. But we were looking to see if that's something that you would like to do, or if you would just want to wait till the bank is done with their foreclosure process. Again, it's an undetermined period of time on how long that's going to take, so.
Is our foreclosure process likely to be any faster than what the bank's already going through?
Well, what, what the attorney said is that they would have us join their foreclosure process, which would apparently speed up the process because we would be a claimant on, on the property because of our current liens. We have about ten thousand of the lien costs so far on the property. So we would have a ability to, um, have a security position on, on that lien as part of that, and so that would give us some ability to collect on that. So the bank may want to move things along so that they don't perhaps lose some position or something like that, I guess.
Is there a first and a second, or just a first?
Uh, I believe it's just a first. Yeah, and then we're, we're a mechanic's lien essentially, so we take priority over that.
Do it.
We got any time, idea of what timeframe we're going to see? I, you know, I don't think that these residents up in the fourth ward who are ringing my phone on a weekly basis could care less about whether we're getting our money back. They just want this property removed from the landscape. I got this one woman up there that is very upset because she can't, she claims it's the reason she can't sell her house, and she's got her house for sale, and people come and repeatedly ask, what's with this boarded up thing down the street? And so there's a lot of people who are quite anguished about this up in the fourth ward, at least I'm hearing.
I can't say that it would officially speed it up, but, um, at least it would make sure that it's followed through diligently because the bank may be dragging their feet for whatever reason, who knows? But, you know, we obviously have a incentive to get it done.
Are we thinking six months to get this done?
I, I couldn't tell you a specific time.
Which, which bank is it?
Uh...
Is it one of the big ones?
I, I can't recall offhand, I'm sorry.
B of H A's?
It's, it's one of the bigger banks.
It's going to be eighteen months before they're done. Let's just be, it's going to be eighteen months.
And, and that would be, I don't, not sure I understand the process, that would just be where the bank would take over control of it.
Yeah, that's...
And then they're going to sit on it for how long before they do something with it?
In the meantime, we're cutting the grass, and we're doing a whole bunch of stuff.
Is there anything we can do as far as eminent domain on that?
Right.
And, and take it and tear it down ourselves and...
Could. I haven't asked the attorney what the cost would be to acquire it and all that. I mean, that, but that, that is something you could do.
Well, no, I think it'd be less expensive to acquire it, I really do.
And maintain it for a year, or eighteen months?
It's going to be a year.
Yeah. You're going to knock it down and plant some grass and put it up for sale.
It's a double lot, I think, isn't it?
It is.
It's two lots, so you could, you could sell them separately for two homes. Makes sense to me.
I think we should pursue whatever alternative there is out there to get it in a presentable situation soonest. If that's eminent domain, or if that's foreclosure, or, or another lien, whatever it is, whatever we got to do to get that thing under control fast.
Yeah, I think what I'd maybe like to do is have the staff take some pictures of it, and then bring them down here maybe to the next city council meeting, and we'll show the pictures and let you see exactly what we're talking about here. And then let, you know, that would go on TV and everything. Let everybody know we're down here trying to do something, and then we will, uh, make a decision as to whether or not we should pursue with, proceed with eminent domain.
We can get to Facebook on the laptop, we could put the pictures up there.
Yeah.
I don't say, I, I know what it looks like.
It was, it was the front page of the Chronicle.
I don't need to see the picture, but I'm...
I don't think everybody here has seen it, so I just think we ought to be showing some pictures of it.
I think Mayor's got a point he's trying to make here, so I think we ought to make it. All right, anything else?
I got something.
Mayor?
Uh, we've got an interesting issue that's been brewing here now for about six weeks, and it starts out in the second ward on Main Street between Blair and about Batavia High School. We got some residents out there that apparently are feeding wild animals. And we have some of the neighbors that have prepared about a twenty-page book or a twenty-five page book in which they've got photos and all kinds of stuff showing all this activity of these people coming out and feeding these animals, and it's skunks and coyotes specifically. Then we move over to the fifth ward, and we're right here in downtown Batavia, and I now have a, there's a new budding industry in town of the trappers. Uh, they've really started to want to offer their services, and I got a call from one the other day wanting to know if we would like to hire him to, uh, help us eliminate the river rain problem that we are now having, where they claim that we are being invaded at night by coyotes. And during the day, Laura says she has seen some up there. I, I went up there and have walked around, I've been in all the areas. I can't find where these coyotes are hanging out, but there supposedly is a herd of coyotes living around River Rain. I, I find this hard to believe because it's, you know, it's a pretty urbanized area down here, and for the coyotes to walk around, I guess, but they're there. But most interestingly, I've just received from the fourth ward, a letter from a gentleman that lives up in the Batavia Highlands, and he and his neighbors have taken matters into their own hands. And they have gone out and hired a trapper, and he has brought in, set up two heavy heart traps, of which they are being charged a hundred and sixty-five dollars for. And they are also being charged sixty-five dollars per animal for the animals that have been caught. And so far, they have caught three raccoons, four possums, and thirteen skunks. And they now have been presented with a bill for one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars, of which they would like you folks to agree to pay.
I can tell you, Your Honor, I have a picture right here on my phone coming out of the parking lot behind the police station. That's coyotes, two of them, that were down there after a council meeting a month ago.
Okay.
And I saw one out on Randall Road, middle of the day, I think it was Saturday, trying to pick a deer off the side of the road, run back into Brabird Marsh, and then when we came back by, it came back out again, trying to drag the deer off the side of the road. So they're out there, but I don't think there's anything we can do about it.
I don't know necessarily what we're going to do about it. I mean, you know, you're, we're surrounded by Fermi Lab, sixty-eight hundred acres on the east side, which is a federal game protected preserve, and, uh, the police tell me that on Tuesday, excuse me, it's tonight, it's Tuesday and Wednesday nights, uh, the boys and girls come down the Roar, the Chicago Roar, or the Burlington Railroad track from the east in, in herds, and they come out on State Street, I guess it's like a receiving ground, and all these coyotes come off. And what they're there for is somehow the word's been passed around out at Fermi Lab that tonight's the night that the garbage cans are sitting out, and the bags are sitting out, and the animals are in search of these garbage, or specifically if you leave a bag there. They can't break into the city. Drums that we haul out on the street, but they go after the bags, and then they spread it all over the street and chew everything. And so now, then tomorrow, that's all south of Wilson Street tonight, and then tomorrow night they'll be back on the north side, but on the west side, the group comes out in Nelson's Lake area. Now, there's about fifteen hundred acres out there that's now part of the largest forest preserve in Kane County, and the boys and girls out there are living, and they get hungry, and so they have the same schedule as the folks on the east side, and they come in on Tuesdays and Wednesday nights, and that's the night that we get overflowed with the wild animals. And so I'm, I'm, as your mayor, I'm getting all these calls and letters, emails from folks wanting us to do something about all these animals, and now I have the trappers literally lining up at the door wanting to come in here and sell us their services.
I've got five raccoons in my backyard, so we're going to start paying for pickup. I mean, I'm, can I get in line? I mean, it's just not reasonable, it's this nature.
I'm, I'm sharing this with you.
No, I get it. It's, I, I appreciate the fact because my wife let our dogs out and didn't see that the raccoons were out there, and I've got one dog that's a little smaller, and fortunately the raccoons all took off of the trees. But, I mean, it's, welcome to the suburbs, I, I don't know what to say.
Right. It's, it's, uh, trying to trap and relocate animals of that nature is literally playing whack-a-mole.
It's also illegal in Illinois. I found that out after trying to relocate possums, that you can't take them out and drop them off in a forest preserve or anywhere else that's public. That's illegal if you do it as a private citizen.
You know what might be a good idea, and I've been approached by the, uh, Park District, they have, um, created an educational program, and, and I really think that's probably where our best bang for our buck is in teaching people how to make your property less attractive.
Definitely don't feed them.
Don't.
Don't put your trash out in plastic bags.
And we looked at, uh, different, thanks to Anthony, did some research for us about what other municipalities, do they have ordinances against feeding animals? Couldn't find very many out there that had that ordinance because, as you can imagine, it would be an enforcement nightmare. You know, my bird feeder also happens to feed not only three dogs who get the bird seed that's knocked on the ground, but quite a few squirrels, and I'm, who knows what gets in there at night and eats the stuff from my bird feeder.
Twice, in the last two weeks on Tuesday nights when I've been walking home, I've encountered a small raccoon walking across the footbridge, which is kind of a surprise. Well, no, these have been on the bridge, and then they disappear off the sides, and I look over to see, did they jump or where are they? But no, they, they've just made their way down, so.
Tuesday and Wednesday are the search and find nights of these animals.
It's some of that is, like Laura said, an educational program. If you put stuff out in plastic bags, the animals are going to come find it, and they're going to tear it open. If you live out west where there's bears and things, you certainly, I mean, everybody knows what to do to make your house less attractive to them.
In Tanglewood?
Yes.
This sounds like a suggestion for our communications director to work on.
I was just going to say...
For a video about this.
Our communications coordinator also happens to be an expert in wildlife and have a number of contacts in that community.
There's an opposite side, though, as we all know through email, there is at least one resident that would rather have the animals stay and us leave.
Right, right.
So what do we do with, with that?
So, I mean, I, I guess I get the consensus here is we don't want to do anything, which I'm not arguing with, I just wanted to let everybody here know that this is a hot topic, and it's on the doorstep almost daily here with somebody that's got a problem with skunks, raccoons, or coyotes.
Are you coaching them when you get a phone call? Do you tell them this is probably the last time you're going to leave a bag out, right?
Well, the one, the one on Main Street showed up and gave Laura and I this packet of information. Uh, the River Rain guys, the trappers are wanting to get their hands on that deal, so they're calling up wanting, I had three now talk with me. And I think somebody at River Rain is putting the word out and stirring these guys up. And then this email just came from the fourth ward today, or the other day, about wanting us to talk about reimbursing them. So...
I'm just saying, if you get any more phone calls, I would, I would certainly coach them to secure their, their garbage.
Well, it's beyond, they're claiming it's, you know, beyond the garbage, they still have the skunks coming in any day of the week, but the police tell me that it's, if you're riding around in the squad, and I invite any of you to want to go out and do it on Tuesday or Wednesday night, they can show you all kinds of wildlife cruising the streets of Batavia. And there's this classic story about they line up coming down the railroad tracks out of the east side, they get on out at Fermi Lab, come right in, and that's their, that's their route into town.
They have to be posting on social media what their plans are. They have a chatroom.
Hi, Newt.
Okay, let's go on to Adam Paul, others? If we have any others? Okay, good, let's go on to executive session for the purpose of, um, let's see, we took this purchase of sale price off there, so the only thing we're going to have under executive session is approval and review of the two thousand seventeen executive session minutes. And there won't be anything coming out of executive session, because there's nothing really to come out of executive session because of that.
Would you vote on the approval of the minutes after you came out of executive session?
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll put it on the next.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Second.
A move by Salvati, second by Ure, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried.